We're live. All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And it looks like our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Y'all are going to stay muted and make me be the one talking, aren't you?
I'll help you out.
Okay, good. Do we have a flag? Or are we going for it?
Chris has a flag.
All right, I'm waiting for you, Chris. Oh, sorry, I can't see it. So a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so then we've got additions to the agenda. Anybody have anything they want to add to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to add 2.4 Paul Johnson from King &amp; King Architects to give an update on the Phase 1 of our capital project.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? Do we need to actually like move and accept that to do that, or can we just do it?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended. Oh, that's what we just did, right? Okay, approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th, 2020, regular meeting.
Move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah. And so then we're at 2.4 with Paul Johnson from King &amp; King Architects. Welcome, Paul. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Excellent. Thank you, Ellen. Great to see all of you again. Maybe a couple new faces on the line here. So again, my name is Paul Johnston with King &amp; King Architects. It's been my pleasure to work in the district for quite some time now. And so I'm here tonight to give you an update on what we're calling Phase 1, which is essentially has completed. We're wrapping up the closeout paperwork with contractors at this point. Overall, it was a smooth project. We had a good group of contractors who worked well together. They did miss our ultimate completion date, but I think with the hurdles that were put in front of them, both with a COVID environment and the really extensive amount of particularly the heating system replacement that we did, I think they performed rather well. I know we had a couple cold days in the building, and I know we had a couple rooms that were extremely hot. So as they continue to get a final handle on those issues, I hope it's quickly, if not already, sort of in the rearview mirror for the people living in the building. Those, what will ultimately be minor issues that honestly are quite typical during construction. It's never perfectly smooth. It's a messy process sometimes, but I think this project went very well. I think we had everyone everyone worked together well. Just quickly to recap some of what we did, particularly for anyone who hasn't heard me sort of go through this before, or as a refresher, a new roof, which was a big deal. If you remember in the beginning, we talked about all the leaks and garbage cans collecting water in various parts of the building. So a new roof that significantly increased the insulation value of your roof. So you're going to get a lot of energy efficiency perks from that besides indoor air quality improvements by not having leaks and any potential other nastiness that unwanted water could create. The next piece was new gas boilers, natural gas boilers. So again, a huge energy improvement item. After that became was mechanical systems, particularly in the middle school, high school. The ventilation units serving the gym auditorium and sort of the main office area were all replaced. Again, a really big indoor air quality improvement for the building. Not only did this help convert your building from steam to hot water, this was sort of the last piece in that larger conversion. More importantly, it brings those areas up to modern ventilation rates and modern codes. And through the new ventilation system, it's also distributing that air around the room better. So again, it's coming through ductwork to multiple diffusers in the ceiling, spread about in the ceiling versus what you see in some or what you had originally, which was a ventilator over by the window trying to shoot air across the whole room, which also makes for a much noisier unit. So let me throw in not only better indoor air quality, but a better indoor environment because of the better acoustics that the new units provide. While we were replacing the mechanical system, we did ceilings in all those rooms as well. So that came along with new ceilings and new lighting. So again, better acoustics with higher value ceiling tile and more efficient lighting and honestly, better lighting. All the lighting that was replaced, it's LED. And then again, so we did, those are sort of the high points. We did all that below budget. If you remember originally, our goal was to at least do about 60% of the roof in Phase 1. And then we designed the entire thing with the hopes of maybe doing a little bit more. We had a bunch of ad alternates to do sections of roofs at a time, and the goal is to add in as much of the roofing as we could. In the end, we actually added all the roofing. So that was, that was a huge plus. The district got really good bid numbers on bid day. And again, as I said, you were below budget. What that allowed you to do was to actually expedite a few specific work items from what was originally scheduled for the summer of 2022, which would have been Phase 3, to this past summer. So a few of those key items were additional ceiling replacement. So if you remember in the main lobby and through a lot of the corridors, what was the, I don't know how best to describe it, it was just, it was a hard surface ceiling tile. It was not an acoustical tile, and it created a really large echo throughout the building. And so we were able to update those ceilings, again, providing better acoustics through the building, and again, replacing the lighting at the same time, since they just go together. It's the best time to do both at the same time. We also were able to, part of the base bit of the project was to provide new mechanical controls to the the middle school and high school areas where we replaced mechanical units. They also came with new controls. We were able to do the rest of the building and convert your entire building to basically a computerized control system. So now the district staff has the ability to better manage and adjust temperatures within the building all through a modern system versus relying on an old pneumatic process that used to be there. So it's great to get that done sooner than later. And then I think the final thing, which was a real nice perk and add was the the new digital sign out front along Kendrick Ave. And so it was great again to get that done now versus waiting a couple more years. So that's sort of the high points of the project. Again, as I said, we're pretty much wrapping up Phase 1. The goal is to do three phases total, which will equal the full, I think approximately $15.3 million project. So we're about, we spent about halfway through the money. We have Phase 2 is coming up next, obviously, and we've already designed it and have State Education Department approval to move forward with that project. That project, we specifically kept as a door and door hardware, interior door and door hardware replacement project. By limiting it to just that focused approach, we're able to expedite the project through the SED approval and ultimately through the bidding and award process. So me, ultimately, what that means for you is a contractor will be in the building ahead of schedule. So instead of waiting till the summer of 2021 to do this work, you would, we would expect someone in the first quarter of 2021 to be in your building, whether that's either over a break or doing it second shift, we'll, we'll figure that out as we go. So what this work does for you, it's the real focus is safety and security. And so this provides door hardware that will have an intruder lock function on the door so that someone would be able to lock their classroom door from the interior and not necessarily have to open the door and fidget with keys and try to and try to lock the door. So that all now can be done from the interior of the door. Also, while we're at it, a lot of your doors are original to the building and well beyond their useful life. They also, also a lot of the older doors are the half glass doors. So again, not a door that really would do well in an intruder scenario. So again, it just made sense to replace a lot of those doors as part of this project. So that's really the next thing to look forward to. And again, we would expect that to be wrapped up before the school year is even complete. And then we would roll right into Phase 3, which is obviously still on pace and scheduled for the primarily the summer of 2022, as we've always discussed. I want to stop there. I don't want to talk too much. I know you have other business, but I do want to answer any questions that anyone might have.
I've got a few, but I'll wait until anybody else goes.
Go ahead.
Hi, Paul. Travis names.
Hi Travis, nice to meet you.
Yeah, I'm a new member this year, so.
Excellent.
First time in year. Everything looks great, first off. Very impressed. Thank you so much for all your hard work. The new roof, what kind of life expectancy can we expect out of it?
At a minimum, you have a 30-year warranty. So the reality of EPDM roofs these days is the first thing that fails is the seams. You can always get a roof reseamed, so you could potentially go well in excess of 30 years with some minor maintenance and additional work, maybe at the 35-year mark. We've, we've, I don't say over, that over makes it sound like we did too much. We've insulated beyond the the code minimum insulation values to really future-proof the roof. And so really, it should not be a maintenance item for a very long time. Some key things for the district yearly is just check drains, make sure they're not clogging up or backing up. But the membrane itself, you know, there's roofs that are EPDM membrane roofs that are going 40-plus years. Manufacturers are actually starting to talk about extending their their maximum warranties to even beyond a 30-year roof. So.
That answers that. Thank you. What kinds of unexpected issues did you come across, if any?
So in any project, there's, there's always discovered conditions. What that, well, that means exactly what it's, what it sounds like. So we can only know so much walking around the building. There's only so much destructive testing we can do in in a building that is occupied and and not end up making spaces unusable. And so we have to rely on existing drawings, which are not always the most accurate. And so, you know, there's always something that someone did or modified along the way that that we discover. So in this project, I, there, there is a litany of minor items where we had to maybe reroute ductwork, modify where an electrical panel was, things like that, where we're just encountering odd conditions. Sorry, say that again?
So nothing major.
No, I think probably the biggest thing from a cost perspective was we realized when all the ceilings were out and you could actually see above ceilings and all, was that the, your existing walls on the first and second floor of the middle school, high school wing, the walls did not technically go all the way up to either the floor deck or the roof deck above, meaning that they were not completely in line with what would be expected for a fire-rated wall. So we addressed that issue when we found it and fixed it. So now obviously you have rated hallways that are more in line with what new construction would expect. You can always, you could always say you're grandfathered in, but when we find these things, it's best to just address them and make the building safer.
I hear you. I'm almost done. Sorry, guys. So for the door project, are we talking about door jam, door and the hardware?
No, often we find to replace the door frame really starts to disturb all the surrounding construction. So if you think about, especially in sort of the older 50s, 60s portions of the building, there's old wall tile, et cetera, and we would be disturbing a lot of it really to no benefit to the district. So we are leaving the door frames and will fit the doors to them. So contractor will likely find some openings that are not perfectly square and he'll have to modify those doors accordingly to fit in those, those frames. There's one or two instances where we have some doors and some doors frames that will not work with the intruder locks. It's, it's only three spots in the building. In those three spots, we will in Phase 3 completely remove frames and replace it. And those areas are the cafeteria, the main office entry. If you think about the main office, it's that weird old sort of 1950s aluminum entry system, storefront system. There's not much we can do there until we rip out that whole, that whole assembly.
Are there any fire code doors? Sorry. Are there any fire code doors? That you're aware of? That's a detailed question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the, so any door off the, so pretty much all the doors we're doing have are rated doors. And so they're they're essentially a 20, 20-minute door. The, the hallways themselves have to have an hour rating. But any door within that hour rating ends up being a 20-minute door. It's funny that we have to have a 20-minute label because any door is inherently 20-minute, a 20-minute door. So it's, they're nothing special, honestly. But they are, they are commercial doors that will, you know, come with an extended warranty and are appropriate for a high-use, heavy-abuse school setting.
My last question, and thank you for answering those other ones. It was very helpful.
Oh, sure. My pleasure.
The, the digital sign, it looks great. Do you foresee any possible future issues with water or ice?
I do know the, the installer is not quite done. He needs to come back. He ordered some final pieces, and I know there is, and I haven't seen it, but I know there was talk that he had to do some, a final cover on the top of, I think, maybe the the knight or the, I'm trying to remember exactly what the, the.
Where the little.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I, I think once he does that final work, which I think is, I think those pieces are, are en route as soon as that's done. I think you should have a full assembly done by a company that does these signs all over the state and beyond for school districts, et cetera. They're always outdoors. And so, no, I would not expect any issues. It is two boards that are back to back, and they normally have a whole system to seal sort of that inner space between them.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for answering those questions.
Sure. My pleasure.
Thank you. Anybody else with any other questions?
I don't have a question but a comment. Just a thank you to Paul and his team. They've been terrific to work with. They've led us through this project. And as he said, the scope of this project was enormous and he did a great job. And we continue to be impressed by King &amp; King, and we look forward to our continued relationship.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, King &amp; King.
Thank you. And as, as some of you know, I love Hamilton. I, I spent most of my life there. So you're near and dear to me. Thank you and have a good night.
Great. Take care. Thank you. Have a good night. All right. So next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is 3.1 through 4.2. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have to do these separately, the treasurer's report and the consideration of claims?
Yeah, she should do it separately. And I have it only going 3.1 through 3.5. There's no consent, you know, no old business, right?
Right. I'm looking at the paper one, not the, okay. So a motion to accept, so I'm looking for a motion to accept. So Debbie, do I have to do the consent agenda and then the treasurer's report and considerations of claims separately? Or how do I do this? I'm sorry.
Do one altogether. You can say motion to accept the consent agenda 3.1 through 3.5. That's fine. And it covers those items in there.
Okay, perfect. So can I please have a motion to accept the consent agenda with items 3.1 to 3.5? Sorry.
I'll move.
Okay. So Cory moved. Travis second?
Oh, I didn't hear Cory. Sorry. I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So there is nothing for old business. So then that brings us to our first community participation. So Chris, Mr. Rogers is monitoring the chat function to let us know if anybody is entering any questions. So we'll give it a couple of minutes. And we'll see if anything comes through. So please let us know if you have any questions. Has there been any sign of motion, Chris, or not really? Okay. How long is the lag usually? Oh. Okay. So if we give it another 30 seconds, we'll know. If I drag my feet long enough, just a little bit longer, we can move on. All right. Yeah, yeah. So I think I'm going to go ahead and move ahead, and we do have a second community participation section. So anything that comes in between now and then, we'll catch then. Okay, so then moving ahead to item 6.1 Personnel. I need a motion to approve Cassandra Britton and Frank Marzella to the substitute list as recommended by the Director of PPS, Business Manager and Superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussions that we can, any questions or discussions that we can have in public? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussions or questions that we can have in public? Motion to approve the recommendation of the CSE and CPSC as recommended by the superintendent? That doesn't feel right, but. Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions or concerns that we'll need to address in executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to discuss the revised policies as recommended by the Policy Committee and Superintendent. So this will just be a discussion event. We will not be moving to do anything. So can I have a motion to go ahead and discuss these three policies, number 7006, 7101, and 8200?
I'll move.
A second.
Okay. Policy Committee want to tell us what's? Okay, that one scanned and upside down. That's not fair.
So, yeah, I forget. Bill, are any of these new policies? I'm trying to look real quick.
No.
No. So 7006 is education of homeless children. I'm just thinking about people who are listening and may not be looking at the 7101 is concussion management and 8200 is home instruction. So were there any major concerns or issues that you felt needed to be addressed in any of these?
Really, they're, I mean.
Yeah, I think mostly suggested edits from the committee were just for clarity on some of these, but a lot of this is mostly coming straight from our BOCs about, you know, to make, to keep us in compliance with changes in law.
Okay.
Cleaned up the wording a little bit here and there.
Often when there are changes, the changes are in different colors, so we can see what was changed and what wasn't. The copies I'm looking at don't have anything in a different color to stand out. Is there? Am I wrong about that?
The Board Policy, the Board Policy Committee got the ones with the changes in the colors. They then determined what they wanted to go to present to the board tonight. So you didn't get any of the colors or anything, only the policy committee did.
Okay, so any changes that you felt were important are already included in the documents that we have on the agenda? Okay.
Is it possible in the future, I'm, I'm a little stuck like where Ellen is, like in the future, after you guys make the changes, would it be possible for us to get a copy with the changes that you guys are proposing as well?
Even just highlight them or something, so we know what's new language, because otherwise.
Kind of like a report?
Yeah, I don't, well, just highlight it like Ellen said, just so I kind of know what I'm looking at that's changed.
Yeah, like what are you changing as opposed to?
Do you want to know if it's like an old policy that we're reviewing? Do you want to know the changes that we made from?
From the previous document?
From what was to what you're proposing to change it to. Yeah, that would be helpful.
That would be extremely helpful. Because I can read this and I can go through it and I can, but, but I don't know what's new and what was old unless I pull out the old copy and copy edit it line by line.
I'm feeling the same way as Ellen.
So. But I certainly don't have any concerns about these at this point. So these will come back to us next month as the second read. And as long as there are no new concerns. Is it possible for you to share with the other board members those, sort of that highlighted version between now and then, so that we have a better sense of?
Yeah, I'll work with Deb on that. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we do not need to vote on that. There's nothing else we need to do with that, correct?
Correct.
All right. So then, any other questions or comments about that? Nope. Okay. So moving on to 6.4, motion to accept the monetary donation of $4,898 from the Emerald Foundation with sincere appreciation and to increase the district budget by this amount.
I'll move.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Other than thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the next item on the agenda was the Board of Education returning to remote meetings. This was something that we wanted to make sure that we discussed openly and publicly about the decision to remove back to remote meetings, particularly in light of ongoing in-person classes. And I'm going to start it, and then Bill, if you have anything else you want to add, and then we can certainly have questions and discussion and all of that. The feeling was that we are at a situation with, go ahead.
Sorry, can I just go back? I think there's an error on this, what we just did on the donation.
Donation?
It says 6,898 and then 4,898 on the actual document. And then if I looked, I didn't look at this earlier, but adding it up at the bottom, it looks like it is 6,898. So we approved 4,898, but it's 6,898.
Yeah.
Does that matter?
No, I think it's okay. Now that it's going into the extracurricular account.
Okay.
So the, the amount to increase the budget is the 4,000 amount that was approved. So I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
So the other 2,000.
Being run through extracurricular accounts. So the amount that the general fund budget's being increased by is the 4,000 amount.
Okay.
But the actual donation is 6,898.
Right. I don't know if that changed.
Yes, thank you, Cory.
Thank you. So again, that's okay. No, gosh, please. So the discussion about returning to remote meetings in a world where there are increasing rates of COVID all around us, the, the general rule of thumb is that, not general rule of thumb, but generally the thought process, as I understand. not general rule of thumb, but generally the thought process, as I understand it, is that, um, anything that can be done remotely just as well as it could be done in person should be done remotely. So a meeting such as this, the, the difference between us having this meeting remotely versus us having this meeting with the board members in the elementary library, um, is not significantly difference, um, is significantly different versus having in-person education happening in person in the building versus having education remotely. And so while, and again, this, this is probably a topic for more discussion later in the meeting. Um, we are continuing with in-person education, um, because the benefits of in-person education are still there. Um, it was my feeling as the leader of this meeting that the, the benefits of having us in the building in order to have this meeting did not outweigh the risks. And frankly, the risks of bringing us into the building is bringing extra adults into the building and bringing extra risk into the building. Um, that really did not seem necessary or to have any benefit. So I hope that was clear and not confusing. Um, and I don't know if there were questions or concerns that people had about that decision. Um, uh, or anything else we need to discuss. Bill, do you have anything?
No, I think you hit it. Um, you know, the, the value added of having a board meeting in person was just not there as opposed to the value added of in-person instruction.
So I, I appreciate you bringing this up, Ellen. I think when we first decided to go back to in-person meetings, I think our thought was we want, you know, if we're sending kids there, we should be willing to go there ourselves. But I think you make a really good point that if, I would hate for it to be us, the ones that are putting at jeopardy the kids being able to go. So while I still feel like the school is a very safe place and I'm, I think the, the staff and and, and faculty have all done a great job with the kids and then the, as well as the parents and kids at keeping the school safe place, uh, to not, uh, endanger that for, just so that we can approve the cafeteria budgets in person, I think is, uh, I think is a wise decision.
So I, I'm not questioning this move to virtual meetings. I'm not. I want everyone to stay healthy. Um, where I'm torn, which Cory kind of just touched on it. The big reason for me that we went back to in-person was to tell the staff, to tell the parents that we feel so safe. We feel it's safe enough that we are gonna come to. But I get what you're saying, that the risk is not worth the reward of in-person. Um, so that is the main reason why you are saying we should be doing these meetings remotely. Is that correct, Ellen?
That is correct. I don't, it's not that I don't feel safe having that meeting in the, in the library with the board members there. It's that if we introduce infection, we wipe out the leadership team of this building, um, whether it be to quarantine or to illness. Um, and that is of no benefit to the district. And so to, to introduce risk with no benefit is really my view, um, on the situation. Um, and so it's not about feeling unsafe being in the school. It's about the risk we introduced to the school. Um, was really what that was about.
So I get that, but to help me understand it, because and Ellen, I'm talking to you now, I guess, because you deal with this every day. I don't. So forgive the questions that I'm gonna ask you now. We've been having in-person meetings where only one administrator, at one point we had two were there. So hypothetically speaking, say we had this meeting in person. Say tomorrow I find out that I had tested positive.
Right.
Now, say the superintendent was the only other staff member in the building. What would play out from there? How would it affect?
So truthfully and honestly, the way our meetings were set up, potentially nothing, because our meetings were set up that we were six feet apart. And that the vast, I mean, again, there were occasionally meetings where we had food delivered or something like that, but, but overall we were in masks and six feet apart. So there is a chance that there would be no complication from that. Um, there is however, a chance that, um, the superintendent would be placed in quarantine. Um, again, the difference for me is that when you're talking about in-person education and you're talking about bringing educators into the building and you're talking about kids and bringing kids into the building, there is an absolute well-defined benefit to that. To me, there is no benefit to the five of us being in that library and, and, and to have this meeting. Um, when, a- and again, there is the potential associated risk. Again, you're right, it is a low risk. Uh, and I agree that it's a low risk when we're six feet apart and we're wearing masks and we're doing all of those things correctly. But it still is to me, um, a situation that doesn't bring any benefit.
Okay.
So that's my view on it.
And I understand that, and I'm not saying I disagree with it, but I think it's important that we talk out, you know, these scenarios. So if the superintendent has to quarantine, the school is still allowed to remain open for in-person teaching. Is that correct?
As far as I know. I mean, he can work remotely.
It's not ideal, but.
Yes.
Yeah. He could work remotely in all those pieces, but.
And obviously, the biggest risk is everyone's safety, ours included. So I get that. So I guess where I'm coming from here is I'm not disagreeing with this. But if we're going to say that it's not safe right now, we need to have some kind of a discussion about when will it be safe to return? If, you know, if you don't feel safe and you want to attend the meeting virtually, I don't have a problem with that if that is allowable, but I feel like it's important that we talk about the types of things that need to happen before we return to board meetings in person. Do you agree?
Again, I don't, I don't know, I, I think I think it's just a matter of where is the benefit? Um,
Well, I mean, if you said that we can do, there really is no difference. Why do we have in-person meetings in the first place?
It's a good question, because legally, up until this moment, we weren't allowed to, right? I mean, legally, we were required to have in-person meetings until COVID happened and we were, were given permission to do things virtually. So there will come a time where they will remove all of those exceptions that were put in place for COVID and we will legally need to return to in-person meetings with open doors to public and, and all of those pieces.
Yeah, and Ellen, I'm not questioning you, you know, I'm gonna.
No, I mean, that's fine. I mean, it's.
But I think that we have to talk about.
It's all good.
Yeah. Um, so we can have that discussion at another point, obviously, but I feel like whenever, you know, in our case, it's us saying this, but any, you know, body of government or whatever, when you change things up, you need to have the conversation about when will it come back, rather than say, well, when we feel like it, I guess. So that's my point I'm trying to make. You know, I want to, I get the risk part that you're talking about. The risk is not worth the reward. And I want in-person teach, or, uh, teaching, in-person class as much as possible, but and I'm not gonna try to drag this on here, but I just think it's important to try to have some kind of an idea of when it is safe for us to come back in person. That's all I'm trying to say.
I would say at least the, the, for me, and again, just to reiterate, I think that what Ellen is saying is that, and, and this is, what's important to me is not the risk of us going to the school, but the risk that we bring to the school. And I think Ellen probably feels that more acutely as somebody who is in the medical, in the medical professional and probably has more exposure to, to people than a lot of us do. So she's, she understands that she's bringing uh, a risk to her that maybe some of us who don't actually have to go in person anywhere right now are, are bringing. Um, but I think, at least for me, and to answer your question Travis, um, we're just getting through the first round of people potentially traveling for holidays. And we're gonna get through a second round of people potentially traveling for holidays. Um, and I think that at least till we get through January, February, and we see how that plays out and how the community spread, if it continues to rise like it has been, or if it starts to fall, I think those are the indicators we're looking at that are really gonna tell us how much we were. I think when we started in-person meetings, things were really good, not just for us and Hamilton, but in the areas around. And it really hasn't been lately. So I think that those are all the indicators, at least, I don't know, Ellen can correct me if I'm wrong, but those are, to me, are the indicators we're looking at for how soon, how safe is it, or how soon is it, is it reasonable for us to be meeting in person? Because it is a little bit easier to meet in person. Um, but.
It removes confusion, that's my point.
Yeah. Yeah, not so much that it, to me, outweighs bringing any risk to the school um, at all, because I don't think we benefit the school just because we, you know, don't want to talk over each other to who's moving on emotion once. So, um, but I think that those are indicators, right? Looking at the community spread. Ellen knows more in this than I do, of course. Um, those are the factors I think that will be key. Right now, where we're constantly thinking, you know, are we gonna be a yellow district, right? At any moment, it could, it could change. I think this is definitely a tense time where we need to, I'm happy saying, back up to, to virtual meetings.
And I think, yeah, I think to Cory's point, I think it's gonna be a month-to-month discussion. I, I think it's, you know, I, I will tell you what I've seen and what I've learned so far, and this is that you cannot draw a roadmap. You, you can't even create a decision point for most of these things. It is very hard to draw a single line saying this is gonna be the thing that makes us change our plan, because it's far, way too complicated for that. But no, I think it's, I think it's a month-to-month discussion and, and I think, you know, when we can get back there, we get back there.
Fair enough. And to be clear to everyone, it's not that we don't feel that it's not safe to be in the building. We just feel that us being there brings an added risk that is not needed at the time.
Yeah. And that's my view on it at this point.
I'll trust your take on it.
Jen, did you have any questions or?
No, I actually, I unmuted at the same time Cory did and was gonna say just about the same exact thing that he said is I also agree that I think it's, I don't think we can predict what's going to happen. I think it also is a month-to-month discussion and um, I know the most important thing to me right now is to get as many in-person days for our children as we can and I, I would just, it would be devastating to me to know that one of us, um, over, like I said, a meeting as frustrating as it can get times, you know, motioning over each other, um, definitely, um, wouldn't be worth it. To me, I'd much rather have my kids at school. Um, and all of our kids at school. So.
Anything else we need to discuss with that, Bill, do you think?
No, I think we're, we're good.
We're good? Okay. All right. So then the next item on our agenda is administrators' updates. Um, so I'm gonna go by the order that I'm looking at them on the agenda, which has Mr. Arquette first.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm gonna start just by, um, bragging about our kids a little bit. So we had our 10 weeks is over. We're actually almost into the five-week marking period for the, or, uh, progress reports for the second marking period, but all of our students at BOSI's passed. We were the only district in our BOSI's to have that happen. So that's great. Um, we had many students both that attend Hamilton full-time and that go to BOSI's that were on honor roll and high honor roll. So, you know, our kids are tough. They're, they're, they're getting through it. They're working hard and, and they're, you're doing a great job. So I'm, I'm proud of our kids and what they're doing and all the support they're getting from our faculty and staff as well. Um, we did have a parent-teacher conference before Thanksgiving break. Um, obviously, it was a little bit different this year, we're going virtual, but we had a lot of positive feedback. We were able to, uh, set some goals for students to, to help them through, through their academic, uh, through the academic year and set up some action steps that will, that will allow them to achieve those goals. Um, we had a pretty good, pretty good parent attendance rate, um, as we went through it. Uh, the PTO also provided us lunch before Thanksgiving and that was, uh, I'm sure it took a lot of work for them to put that together because they had to wrap everything separately and, and make sure that everything was COVID-safe. And so I thank the PTO and the Landmark for all their work to do that, to get that together for us before Thanksgiving. Um, currently, we're having a door decorating contest and so it's starting with a little bit more festive in the hallways, which is great. And the last thing I have is, you know, we continue to remind students of, say we were to go fully virtual, what that would look like, um, what the expectations will be and informing parents of what that would look like and what the expectations would be. Um, just in case. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna editorialize on that and I just want to make sure that we're saying out loud that, um, super proud of the kids and the hard work that they're doing and, and how hard this is. But also acknowledging that they wouldn't be succeeding without the teachers and the staff supporting them and how super hard it is for all of them too. So I'm just gonna, I know, I know you have said that and I know you feel that and I just wanna editorialize and add it. So, okay, so I have Ms. Thomas is the next person on my list.
Good evening. Um, so it seems like this has been, when I sat down to do the report, we, it's been a really busy month. Um, so we have, we've been working on a lot of different projects and wrapped up a bunch of different things as well. Um, so I'd like to just say thank you to Sheri Houck, um, for sponsoring World Kindness Day in the elementary. And although it was a simple celebration, um, I really think that it brought our focus back to some really important character traits. Um, and the students appreciated that focus on kindness for a couple of days. Um, the fifth graders, I had mentioned last month that they were just beginning their food drive. Um, we ended up, uh, having more than 200 combined boxes and cans of food totaling over 150 pounds donated, um, to the food cupboard. And the fifth graders were really proud of their leadership in that. They initiated the idea. Mrs. Merrill and Mr. Posner really supported them through that. So that was pretty impressive. And every morning outside, um, the front doors, they were really excited to see, um, the food that was brought in. So thank you to the community and parents and families for that. Um, HCS, uh, PTO has been incredibly impressive with, um, collecting and, um, bringing us boots and coats and gloves. And today, we really, really appreciated that. So this was the first day where we really needed snow pants and boots for our kids and it was great to be able to go to the closet and provide, I can't tell you how many, uh, of those items I personally handed out and I know teachers, um, handed out even more of them. Um, huge thank you to Sarah Zagby and Allison Farrar for putting together our first virtual play. Um, I know there was a lot of trepidation, um, leading up to it because, uh, they were really worried about technology glitches and so forth and um, Chris really helped them put that together and it was a huge success. So, so funny and the kids were, you know, we just all, it was really just boosted all of our spirits to see the kids participate in that. Um, we also had, uh, I just have so many thank yous tonight. I just keep saying thank you, thank you. But, uh, Mr. Dorsey Spencer, um, also collaborated with us to do a virtual author visit. Um, and he shared his new book, Worms Are a Yummy Snack with us. And he did a video explaining um, the backstory behind, behind him writing the book and, um, and I actually had the benefit of going into a classroom and seeing a teacher use his book um, as a, you know, as a piece of, uh, writing workshop, which was really neat. So um, we hope that, you know, in the future, he can come in person and, and share future books or, you know, talk a little bit more about that. Um, we, uh, had a great collaboration, uh, with Cove and SOMAC and we had some, uh, Colgate students give a virtual tour of the ambulance and then also I'll piggyback that with some literary resources that were really fun um, in the classroom. And I know that the students in the primary grades really enjoyed that as well. And we, um, met with Jody Popple this month, the math, uh, math specialist, uh, virtually through a Google Meet and really began the discussion of talking about math curriculum, um, really looked into the next generation standards and she gave us a lot of, uh, good perspective, um, not only from her knowledge, but also because she works in a lot of the area districts. So she was able to share with us some of the different paths that, um, area districts are taking in terms of, uh, looking at new math curriculums as well. And, um, this month, um, Mrs. Farrar, Mrs. White also, um, started the science, um, the new pilot science curriculum. And, um, from today, um, they reported back that they really are enjoying it. It's very hands-on. Um, they're just super, super excited about it. So they're gonna be piloting that for the next month or so. And, um, the kit is the Dynamic Earth. And so they're gonna then talk to our staff about the pros and cons and we'll see moving forward. So, yeah, so lots of, it's been a busy month in the elementary, so.
It's great. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Mr. Rogers is next on my list. Thank you.
Two teachers just said they couldn't hear you. Three teachers.
Hello? Okay. They should be able to hear me now, I think. Anybody giving you a thumbs up? Can you hear me now? Give me a, give me a sign, YouTube. I think that they can hear me now. I, I think I had the wrong microphone selected. Okay. So to recap, I'll do it really fast for those of you who missed what I said before. I'm saying, so we're spending a lot of time, first of all, thank you, Morgan. Second of all, we're spending a lot of time helping teachers and parents and students, making sure that everything is in great working order. So that if we need to go to remote, we can do so quickly and reliably. And lastly, we're beginning to look forward now in investigating some technologies that can make our online instruction more interactive and engaging for kids. Looking at software solutions like NearPod and we just invested in, in Kami, which is a tool that a lot of teachers were using. So we're looking for those sorts of technologies that can make internet, like, online learning more interactive for kids. That was the quick version and the slow version altogether. Any, any questions, questions for me?
Chris, will you just give an update on Smart Schools?
Sure. So as you know, we were quickly approved for the second phase of the Smart Schools Bond Act. Over the summer, we were waiting to get repaid for the first half. We did get repaid for the first half, so we started spending from the second half of the plan. The plan is to, to make all of the technology in the rooms uniform. So we have a number of really aging projector systems and interactive whiteboard systems in the building, which we are replacing with new LCD Promethean panels. Those have all arrived. And the maintenance crew has developed a schedule for installing those in the buildings or in the rooms that still need them. We, we installed about half of them in the last phase and this will finish that. And then beyond that, there are some other upgrades that we need to do. We needed, we badly needed a new P A system in the gym, which we're gonna handle with this phase of the Smart Bond. We have a number of very, very old Chromebooks, which any of you who are parents of fourth and fifth graders have seen. Unfortunately, they got the shortest end of our, our stick. So those have been ordered, probably not surprisingly to, to many of you to hear, but, but there is a big Chromebook shortage. Like, they're pretty hard to come by. So I keep checking in with my CDW representative weekly, you know, how's that order coming? You know, all, everything's been processed. We're just waiting for them to arrive. So once this phase of this Smart Bond project is over, we will be in a really good place technology-wise. We're going to be using some of the money to, to continue my replacement cycle in terms of devices for the, the teachers. So I feel like we'll be in a good place when this is, when we're through with this.
Great. Thank you very much. I guess I didn't give anybody else the opportunity to ask any questions up to this point. Did I have any other questions for anybody other than Chris? No, we're good. All right. So then we move on to Mr. Ellis.
Good evening. So the special education survey went out on December 1st. I highlighted that in my board report. I just checked it before we went on today. We sent out 100 surveys to families, to students with IEPs and we, we have two surveys complete. So if there are any student, any parents listening, we need to get 50% of those surveys back or the state requires us to do it again this year. So we'll get a second round. Hopefully we can get those in. I'm gonna put some reminders out. It's really only been eight days. And the parents have the option of filling out the survey and snail mailing it. So that process probably takes a little while, but they can also go online and do the survey. The only hitch is you have to have the PIN number from the original survey that was mailed home. So if they, if a parent's listening and you've got that survey, please go on and fill that out. We do need the feedback, not just to get to 50%, but because it also gives us some really good information to go on. It's designed to help us help parents better to increase communication and to service our students as best we can. So that information back will be important for us. So please fill those out. I'll send some follow-up emails and stuff, get it going. We do have until August to fill it out. But, but we don't want to wait until August, so we'll get on there. So the, just a quick DESSA update, the, the DESSA Elementary Data Team met today. And what we did was took a look at the original results of, of students at each grade level. So we've, the SCL team filtered through each grade level. So we had grade level meetings and we looked at the students that fell below the threshold. They call that in need. So I think I outlined that we had about 55 students, K-12, about half of those in the elementary that fell in need. But those in need would get the full DESSA, SCL survey. But we often look at kids that, that fell just, just above the threshold too. And that was a large part of what we talked about today. A lot of times those are kids that fall through the cracks. You know, they're not really screaming that they need help, but they could use some support. So we talked about at each grade level, those students, we identified about 25 students that we want to dig in deeper. And then we kind of ran into a little bit of a hitch with our plan. So our plan was to, to give the DESSA and the full DESSA to the kids that need it and then start working with those students and put, put them into the RTI process. The hitch we ran into, you know, we already have about 50 kids in the RTI process through academics and now we're adding another 25 students. Some of them are the same through SCL. And now we've got this pretty good-sized group of students that are getting this RTI supports. But the RTI team meets every other Tuesday, both in the elementary and the high school. You know, 75 kids in the elementary every other Tuesday doesn't really give us a ton of time to dig deep into those kids. So what we, part of the day we did today, part of what we did was to, to try and figure out another way without taking more time away from the teachers where we can work together to support those students. So, you know, it's, it, it's just, it's tricky because you're trying to balance giving teachers the time to work with their rooms, with their kids, with the, with the remote and in-person learning and, you know, and then we're adding, wow, you know, we, we need to meet another time in addition to the time we're already meeting for the RTI sessions because we have too many kids. So. But we have a bit of a plan for that and, and so that's where we are with that right now. The next step is, is we identified these kids, but how are we going to support each of those kids that are needing support? In what ways? So we're coming up with different strategies and we already have quite a few. You know, just the, the counseling sessions that the counselor's doing, adding kids to counseling sessions, creating new counseling groups for kids that have specific needs. So we're getting there. And then just lastly on my report, I did include this kind of a bit of information on what we do in the CSE department. In the last year, we did 256 meetings. What is that? What are we really doing at these meetings? So I kind of outlined the different meetings that we have, just to keep the board kind of up to date or educated with what happens at these meetings, what types of meetings. And so each of the subsequent four board reports, I will outline one of the different types of meetings that we have. I outlined this week the reevaluations, sometimes called triennials. They happen every three years for each student. I did, I chose that one to outline because that's really the bulk of our meetings right now is going through these reevals and triennials. So do you have questions?
Kevin, I have a quick question. Since we have such a large number of students, is there any strategies that could be implemented to an entire classroom that could obviously benefit all students that may be able to hit especially some of those students on the threshold as well?
Absolutely. So two, two ways we're doing that. So right, right now, we do have Positivity Project and Second Step. So those are SCL design programs that we have that every kid kind of gets, we call that, you know, our tier-one kind of supports. It happens within the classroom. So we have some of those. But then also with the DESSA, one of the nice things about DESSA that was unexpected when we purchased it, you know, we, we bought it because we needed a, you know, a universal screen or a progress monitoring tool to collect data to see how we're doing. But one of the things that came with the DESSA is, so there's a whole tab on strategies. If you click on it, there, there are scores and scores of lessons designed for the classroom, for small groups and for individuals. And so the teachers can go right in there and scoop up some of these lessons designed specifically for very, you know, very pinpointed kind of SCL needs that a teacher may say, well, my whole class kind of needs this, you know, based off of my data, based off what I see, I can teach this one particular or two particular lessons that can help support them. So, yeah, really good question. And then I'll add to that, Jen, too. That's how we got to the DESSA. The elementary team came together and we said, well, we got Positivity Project. That's great, but it doesn't cover everything. We have Second Step, but that's kind of dated. We've had it for a while. We need something new. So we started looking at different programs for the whole school, systematic programs, like what you're talking about. And we said, wait a minute, what, what do we need? So that's where we said, we, we need to, we need to find out what we need and that's why we got the DESSA. So I think this year and next year, we'll spend a little bit of time looking at the different programs now that we kept some good information about large groups and what we really need is a systematic approach to instruction for SCL.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ellis? Thank you, everyone. Thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for all your hard work. Again, we thank the students, we thank the parents, we thank the teachers and staff, and we thank you guys. I think we're to Mr. Dallas.
We have Matt, Ellen. Sorry, Matt, you're not getting out of it.
You know what? Thank you, Jen. Good save.
Thank you very much, Jen. You're, you're gonna be hearing plenty of me in February, March and April. So I, I don't have much really in, in my office. This time of year, there's, there's a little bit of a lull. We're, we're post-audit, post-financial reporting. There's, we're starting to get little bits and pieces coming out with regard to budget for '21, '22. Just today, they released the tax base growth factors, which is a district-specific measure that goes into calculating our tax cap. So I know that those words may make you cringe a little bit, but, you know, it's, it's a bit encouraging. We did have a positive factor of .0045. So just for perspective, last year, our growth factor was .0025. And this is a district-specific factor that accounts for new additions to the tax base. So tax base growth is good. That allows us to increase the amount of taxes that we can levy within the tax cap. So it, it's hard to say exactly what that means. If I had to guess, I'd say probably two tenths or about a quarter of a percent addition above and beyond the 2%. So that's good. With, you know, with regard to the state budget, really, it's, it's been most eerily quiet. You know, there was a lot of talk of the 20% aid reductions. There were a couple of minor payments where we did have that 20% reduction over the summer. Our full, our general aid payments, which are big aid payments, have been being paid in full. There really hasn't been a lot of buzz about that. So really, as of right now, fiscally, we're in good shape for the current year. We don't anticipate it to, to have a real positive budget outlook from the state for '21, '22. But, you know, we'll, we'll move forward accordingly. So other than that, we're just, you know, we're plugging along and to echo what the others said, it's, it's really, it's really neat to watch everybody doing what they're doing these last three, four months. I, I really do think it's a testament to everybody's hard work to be able to do what we've done. So it's, it's good to be a part of. It is taxing, but I think we're, we're doing well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did I miss anybody else before we go on to Mr. Dallas? And thank you, Jen.
Good catch, Jen.
I think we're good.
Matt was very appreciative of that.
I'm sure he was.
I'll, I'll echo some thank yous. Obviously, our, our faculty and staff and support staff for the work they're doing day in, day out in the classroom. But, but I really want to take this time to thank this administrative team. You know, the, the work that they are doing behind the scenes to keep this district moving forward in their particular areas and the level of stress that they are under is immense. And, you know, sometimes they're, they're not recognized and appreciated as much as they should. And I just want to make sure that, that we are, we are recognizing them and appreciating the work that this administrative team is doing. Because it really is, the, the job they're doing is outstanding. So thank you to each and every one of you. Some more good news. We were, and this is a shout-out and a thank you to our coaches, our student athletes, and Lauren Reynolds is our athletic director. We were recently recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as a school of excellence. So what that entails to be able to, to have that designation, 75% of all of our varsity teams must be named a scholar athlete team. In 2019 and 20, all but one of our varsity teams were, were designated as scholar athlete teams. It's a huge accomplishment. We are one of 147 schools in the state to achieve this accomplishment and only 15 other schools in Section 3 were named to this list. So that's a tremendous recognition, not only for their athletic excellence, but the work they're doing in the classroom at the same time. So kudos to them. As a means to support our, our board goal of health and safety, Matt and I met with Brian DeRosi, who is the New York State Police's School and Community Outreach Coordinator. We have started a safety audit of our policies of our building. So Brian, Matt and I did a, a school tour two weeks ago and we started looking at areas of improvement. And we have a safety audit checklist that I shared with you that we will be working through in the next couple of months with the administrative team and with the faculty and staff to identify areas that we can improve on as far as our campus safety and our, our policies in regards to campus. as far as our campus safety and our, our policies in regards to campus safety. So we're moving forward with that. And with that, I'd like to jump right into, we had a meeting today, our faculty and staff has shared some concerns about the safety of schools at this time. You know, we're all well aware of the, the amount of positive cases in our area is on an uptick in, in a very concerning rate. And we are, we've hit many metrics to be designated as a, a zone, a yellow, orange or red zone geographic area. The only thing holding us out of those zones right now is hospital capacity. But so to answer some of their concerns and to have some of their questions answered, I invited Eric Feist, who is the Director of Health for the Madison County Department of Health to have a virtual call and answer some of their questions and ask the very pointed question, are schools safe? And his, his direct answer was you are safer in school than you are in the community right now. And I think that was important to hear from our Director of, of Public Health from the county. You know, that because of the mitigation strategies that we have in place in school and the great work that our faculty, staff, administrators, our families, our students, we have everybody knock on wood right now. We have not had a positive case within this district. And we are the only district in our BOCs that can attest to that. So, you know, we are very safe in school right now. And, you know, the question was posed, should we be proactively closing before the holidays? And without that data to support and a closing, you know, it's my opinion that we should be capturing every in-person day of instruction as we can at this point. You know, through our task force that put together a reopening plan, it was very clear from everybody that in-person instruction i- is far better than virtual instruction. So at this point, I think we should, you know, it, based on Eric's comments and that we don't have data to support a closing at this time, we should be staying open and providing education in person to our districts until we can't. And many districts that are, are virtual right now, the reason that they're virtual is because of quarantining and lack of staffing because of those quarantines. Not necessarily the number of positive cases within the building, because as, as Eric stated, the spread is really not happening in schools. They have no evidence of and data to support that the spread is happening in schools. You're, you're more at risk out in the community than you are in school because of the mitigation strategies that we have in place. So I thought it was important for our faculty and staff to hear that directly from Eric. And and make that determination that we should be providing in-person instruction for a number of reasons. It's best for kids. It alleviates the burden on families right now. You know, if we were to close without data to support a closing, what would that do to our, our essential workers who then have to take on the burden of childcare? And, and possibly be out of work. So I think, you know, it, it's important for us as a board to have that discussion and talk about what are the next steps as far as cluster testing, which we have been working on putting together some policies and protocols that if we are designated a, a cluster or a zone, whether it's yellow, orange or red, are we prepared to do that? And we are prepared. Through the good work of Dr. Larson and Colgate, we will be working on a partnership for Colgate to be our lab partner to help. The, the Department of Health will provide the tests. And Colgate will be our lab partner to help the logistics of the testing and read the testing. And, you know, we have work to do internally as far as uploading that data to the state. You know, if, if we're a yellow zone designation, we are required to test 20% of our in-person faculty and staff and students in a two-week period. And the department has enough tests to be able to do that. If we are an orange zone, we are required to test 25%, but we have a month to do that. And we have to test a minimum of 10% weekly. And then if we're a red zone, we have to test 30% of our in-person faculty, staff and students. We have sent out surveys to our families to get consent. We have sent out a survey to our faculty and staff to get consent. So when that designation does come, we have our consents already in place to be able to pull from those consents, the percentages that we need to meet the mandates of the testing. So when I talked to the Department of Health last week, they were very concerned that we would be placed at this, not necessarily our district, but this region would be placed in the cluster very soon. And talking to the Department of Health this week, they've kind of backed off of that because our two hospitals within our region have capacity right now to be able to, you know, one of the metrics is hospital capacity. And what we're being told is those hospitals are not at capacity right now. So that's keeping us out of the cluster designation. So that's where we are as far as in-person instruction, cluster zone testing. There's a lot of layers to that, that we can spend a lot of time talking about. I'm sure you have questions and comments. So I'll turn it over to and open the floor to any of that.
Bill, I, I, I agree with you that in-person is pivotal while we can get it in. And we have been so fortunate that we haven't had any cases, but I do worry about, obviously I worry about the safety of everyone, but I also worry about the mental wellbeing of people. And it's been such a tough year. And yeah, we've been good to this point, but as I've shared, you know, I have concerns about the next couple of weeks and the implications that that could have on just morale. So I'll go with you that, you know, we should get the in-person days while we can. Because obviously in-person is just, I feel way better. But I, I do have this concern that, yeah, we've been smoothing pretty sailing, sailing pretty smoothly, but I just, I always say I want to be proactive rather than reactive. And obviously things are going to happen, but I just, I just worry about the next two weeks. I really do.
I do as well, Travis. And we're acutely aware of the mental stress that is on everybody. And the unknowns are what's really driving the anxiety. And we all know in, Eric Feist stated today, it's going to be after the holidays that are really going to be a real concern. So I think we should have a conversation about, does it make sense to proactively close? Or not close, but remove, move to remote instruction after the holidays for a period. I, I think that, that makes sense to discuss at this time, not necessarily.
He speaks more to the physical safety of people, not to the mental wellbeing of people, correct?
Well, he, he's also very concerned with the mental wellbeing of, of everybody. Particularly students, you know, if, if we're in a virtual setting, the social emotional toll that that's taking on students not to be in person, you know, from an academic and social.
And the families of students and staff.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're going to see the effects after the, the Christmas holiday of not only Thanksgiving, but the, the Christmas holiday. So it's going to be, the, the rates are going to be high. You know, so I think we should have the discussion about a potential move to remote instruction after the holidays.
I agree with you. Just, you know, it, it's tough, obviously, but I just am worried about the next two weeks and the implications they will have on people's holidays and travel and. But our, our goal is to educate students. And if in-person is the way to go, that risk is worth the reward. That's all I have. I just wanted that to be out there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think as you highlighted, Bill, I think it's important to recognize how vital the work of our staff and teachers has been, how important the in-person instruction is for students for so many reasons. And for so many of us parents to have that. I think anybody who didn't already know, who's had to take on that burden of doing some kind of teaching with their kids on those virtual days already, that definitely knows now how important it is to have teachers with your kids in person and, and teaching them. So I, I think that we can't do enough to express our thanks and our, our debt that we owe to the people who are, or who are doing that at the school, everyone who's involved in that. But I think you're right that we should maximize as much as we can right now, the, the in-person days that are available. So I think that you're right to, to, to try and do that as best as possible. I don't know what kind of messaging maybe we could do as a district to try and encourage as much as possible, parents to make the right decisions when they're thinking about holiday travel or gatherings and what that could mean for not just their family, but everybody's families. And for the safety of the teachers who are putting themselves at risk by, by coming to school. That, you know, as much as we can, it really takes our whole community to continue to make this a safe place and continue that safety. So I don't know what kind of messaging we can do as a district or, you know, I don't want to cross any lines, but if we can help get that word out as much as possible, I think that would hopefully get, you know, even if it's just a few people who think twice before they do something that, that puts the rest of the community at risk. But also one suggestion I had was because I've seen, you know, like the, the NBA had a lot of success with their bubble where they just had everybody quarantined within the bubble. So seeing maybe like you and Matt could just keep the kids there 24/7, watch them overnight. Everybody, I think most of the community would be totally fine if you two want to take on that responsibility. And that would really reduce risk.
Yep. Matt, Matt will have the, he'll cover the gymnasiums. Yep.
Perfect.
Yep. We'll put out all the equipment.
I love it.
I really hope my wife's watching, Corey.
On that note, anyone else with any other questions or comments or concerns? When do we want to have the discussion about thinking about after break? Do we want to do that now? Do we want to wait until we see the actual state of things? I mean, I think we know what the actual state of things is going to be. And I, when do we want to have that discussion and make decisions if we need to?
I think we should do that sooner than later, Ellen. And that way, if, if, if we make the decision to go virtual for, just using this as an example, the two weeks after break, parents have enough time to secure childcare, you know, make arrangements with their work schedules. I think the more advanced notice we can give, the better to help ease that burden.
So remind me again, when do students return after break?
January 4th.
So we're looking right along, if you want to do that, correct?
Yes.
You want to give them good.
So can we maybe talk about making a special meeting next week? To give us an opportunity to organize thoughts from all perspectives about what this is going to mean. Because it's also going to mean thinking about things like providing childcare for essential workers. And those sorts of things, right? I mean, there's, there's food delivery, there's providing childcare for essential workers. There's a lot of pieces to consider. And I just feel like we all should have the opportunity to organize those thoughts before we come together to, to, to have that discussion. So.
Go ahead, Ellen. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Go, you go.
So Bill and Ellen, maybe this is somewhere, Ellen, this might be where you're going to jump into, just so we're all kind of clear here. Say tomorrow, we're in a yellow zone. What happens?
Sure. So if we're designated as a yellow zone, the only thing that happens is that we are now required to test 20% of our in-person students and staff within the next two weeks. School remains open. We're still delivering instruction. It, it's just a testing component.
If those two weeks fall within the break, does that still count?
We wouldn't need to do testing during break.
Right.
The testing, what the testing does is assesses the level of infection prevalence within the school relative to the outside community. And as long as the rates identified within the school are lower than the surrounding community, in-person classes can continue without any changes. I believe that's where yellow stands right now. Honestly, they have changed the recommendations on these colors every week. So I believe with yellow, you have to do testing for two weeks. If the testing remains below the, the surrounding region, you do not need to continue testing in yellow. Once you get to orange and red, the testing is ongoing as long as you remain in orange and red. And it's really just monitoring to make sure that infection prevalence is, is below the rates of the surrounding community is, is primarily the, the indication for that. So I was able to call in to the meeting with Eric today and, and he confirmed what I'm seeing in, in information from a variety of medical sources is that, is that the transmission in broad terms is not happening in schools. It's happening in homes. It's happening at small gatherings. It's not happening in schools. And that's why there is this sense of, you know, schools are safe at this point with masks, with distancing, with all of these pieces in place. They really just are not seeing spread in schools.
And I think too that, and Bill and all the team that worked on the reopening plan, I think a lot of credit goes to them because the plan that we're following is working apparently. So kudos.
Working really well.
As far as the potential move to virtual instruction after break, my thoughts would be mostly that it seems we're being speculative about the need for it at best. So as far as I was trying to think of, you know, what are the decisions that can lead to us saying why we should go virtual? And it seems like if we're trying to think of from data standpoint, we obviously won't have any data that gives us a big, good indicator. You know, anytime soon, it's going to mean, you know, the data would come much later as to whether or not that's, that's the right move to make now. But the other factors that seem very important, the two factors, obviously like you touched on was the need for in-person instruction versus the safety of our, of our faculty and staff. And so for me, I guess I'm wondering how much of this decision to move to virtual learning after break would be a board decision. It seems like a district decision that should be made by somebody who's got their finger, finger on the pulse of, of what's going on in the district with this faculty, with the staff. I can only speak from the perspective of a, of a parent, knowing, and, and from the parents I know that that in-person instruction is invaluable, not just because, and you know, not that it's not part of this, but having your child gone for the day is important for so many people trying to get work done. But the value of the instruction that kids get in person, I mean, my, my middle schooler who's, who's very self-sufficient, I don't have to supervise her. She even tells me, you know, the, the, the virtual stuff is easier to do because I don't have to, I don't think as much. They don't, you know, I don't take the time to reflect. I don't do the thing. And, you know, she even recognizes that she's not getting as much out of it because it's so much easier to check a box when you're doing stuff at home on your own versus having somebody there over your shoulder, not literally, but helping you like refocus and do those things. So to me, at, at least from my perspective, those are the only, the two competing interests we're working with here. And, and I'm not sure that at least for me as a board member, I feel like that's a decision that I can fully assess without being in the building with teachers and with faculty, with staff.
Corey, are you saying that you would be looking for a board recommendation to discuss and possibly vote on as opposed to a discussion about the general topic?
I guess I'm saying, I'm not even sure if we, as a board, vote on this. This is.
Well, I think.
Like we, do we have to vote whenever we go virtual? I mean, it seems like we voted on the plan and, and this would be, I guess, maybe a deviation from that plan, I guess. So.
I do need hard support to make the decision. I do need board support to make the decision to go virtual, right? I mean, that would be the appropriate thing to go completely remote. Um, should have board support, it seems. So Corey.
When you say support, do you mean just meaning like to support others or an actual vote?
I suspect.
Would we be required to vote if, in that hypothetical?
I, I believe other districts that have moved in that direction have had a board vote.
But are we required to?
I don't know. I will check.
I suspect it's the right thing, but it's worth checking. Um, so, so Corey, really the concern that I would share from my perspective is that we are seeing, and mathematically, this may not be quite correct, but essentially logarithmic rises in cases. And the curve was already going up before people started having Thanksgiving gatherings. And what we are seeing now is really sort of those Thanksgiving transmissions, which, and again, the numbers from the county are startling. Um, and the concern is that we are still in this logarithmic rise and we are going to hit holidays and breaks. And it doesn't matter how many times we say people shouldn't get together and people shouldn't travel and all of these things, it's going to happen. And there are realistic decisions that people need to make for a variety of reasons. So I'm not judging on those decisions, but it's going to happen. So we need to be realistic about what's going to happen over that break. And when that curve is already logarithmic rising and then you put people together, there is going to be another two-week window before we know how much bigger that curve is going to be. And so I think the thought of the idea of going, and again, I, I, like I said, I, I need to really work this out on paper in my head to say where, what's the risk and benefit here of, of these decisions. But, um, but the, the real concern is that in those two weeks, coming back after the holidays, w- w- we may be seeing cases at a level where we may not have kids and staff in school anyway, because they may either all be sick or in quarantine, because there's going to be so much prevalent in the community that, that is the better part of valor at that point, to take those two weeks and let the community kind of come back to a baseline and then bring in-person learning back. Um, and, and, um, go from there. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that the concern is necessarily the risk of spread in school because again, there is very little evidence that that is happening in, in a landslide fashion. I think the concern is how many students and staff are we going to have either sick or on quarantine and, and not able to actively participate in, in the programming, um, that we would want set up. And so I mean, that's my perspective on it. And that's, that's where my thought process is in, in that.
Well, here's where I'm confused now, because we just got done talking about how schools aren't the spread. So there's no reason right at the moment. So obviously the numbers, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but it's reasonable to expect the numbers are going to jump in the next month or so. So not having in-person class after break would be because it's likely that we would be dealing with quarantine classes left and right? Or because we're worried about the spread in the school?
No, I think, uh, I'm worried that we are going to have so many people who are in quarantine outside of the school contact that we're not going to have anybody in school anyway. That, that people are going to either have been sick or exposed or in quarantine because of their out-of-school situations. That, that school is not going to be, we're not going to be able to have enough people in school for it to be productive. Does that, are you understanding what I'm saying?
I, I follow what you're saying. Um.
So can I just speak?
This is why I wanted to have another meeting where I've had a chance to really, but Jen, go.
Um, just from a different angle, do we think that by extending break virt- you know, by making those two weeks in, uh, remote instruction? Do we think that it would just encourage more people traveling and more gatherings? And because they wouldn't necessarily have to be back here in Hamilton, they would be able to stay wherever they are.
It just prolongs it. And again, that's, that's when I, when I say, I think we need to like put all of the discussion on the table. That's what I'm talking about. And that's why I think we need to come back another day because I, I don't feel like we have all of those pieces. I don't feel like, I mean, I know where my. But I think there are a lot of other pieces that need to be on the table when we have that discussion.
And I guess to end with how I feel is, you know, I'm not in this every day. I'm not in the medical field every day. I'm not in the school every day. So I can discuss this topic as a board member. I'm welcome. I, I, I don't have a problem doing that, but ultimately I'm going to reply on the recommendation of the superintendent. And also you, in this case, Ellen, is a board member who, this is your expertise. You know, if you want an opinion on a road sign out front, I hope you'll listen to me. So I'm going to listen to you because this is your area of knowledge. Um, and thank you for explaining some of these things to me so I can understand it more. Um, I get it, but I'm going to rely on the recommendation of the superintendent and kind of go from there.
To your point, Travis, you have also often brought different perspectives to our discussions from your experiences and your, you know, the, the pieces that you balance are different than the pieces that I balance and are different than the pieces that Corey and Jen balance. And so you do bring pieces to that discussion that I think are important. And so again, I, I just, I think this is not a decision we shouldn't make tonight or can make tonight, because I think there are way too many pieces that need to be brought in that I know I haven't had a chance to consider. Um, and.
I guess what I'm saying is.
Michelle should be a part of that conversation as well.
Obviously. But I, what I'm saying is if we're going to discuss this, I think the administrative team kind of has a pretty good clue where we feel on things, but if there would be a motion to, you know, go to fully remote and the board is expected to take that motion and vote on it, that is where a discussion should happen.
So here's, I guess, my sorts of thoughts about this, and this comes back to Robert's rules. Is that we make the motions. We don't have to walk into the meeting with a motion on the table.
All right. I could make a motion right now on this motion. Yeah.
You can make a motion right now about anything. And so, I, I mean, my thought is we plan a special meeting to discuss all of the, you know, considerations i- in regards to going remote. And, and Jen, your point about, does it just actually prolong risk i- is actually a very valid point. And it's all of those pieces that we need to put in and say, okay, what do we think? And again, understanding that the day before we're supposed to open, that decision may change. Um.
So to that, that, that's where I was asking Bill about the timeline. Bill, how long of a notice do we need to alert the public that there would be a special meeting? Like, what's the earliest that we could have a special meeting?
It's 24 hours, right?
Yeah, I believe that's right.
Is it 24? Okay.
It is 24 hours.
Thank you, Debbie. Yeah, I mean, we can have a special meeting. I'd be fine with that, but, um, yeah. It's tough because nobody knows what to expect. We're dealing with assumptions and, you know, there's risk and reward and it's tough on everybody. So we'll just have to work our way through this.
Bill, do you feel that way as well, that there's still some question here that we need to discuss? Or do you feel like there's a confident road that you think is, is the way we should go right now?
No, I, I, I think there's too many unknowns at this point to make a decision on what's going to happen in two weeks. Um, that's the real difficult part. I, I, I hold true to every day that we can have an in-person instruction, we should be doing. Um, but I do think that we should, you know, at least have a conversation of what, you know, Eric's remark of, you know, mid-January, it's going to be quite challenging. So I think we should at least have that discussion and be prepared. Um, but I, I, I hold on to every day of in-person instruction is like gold.
Corey, go ahead.
I agree. If, if we do have an in-person or, or a special meeting to discuss this further, I think um, we have in the past relied on a lot of experts that we have in our community. And I think I'd be happy for you to welcome them to the meeting or at least bring, you know, the people that you've consulted, bring us what they've told you so that we can know, you know, what the, what work has been done. And the same with, you know, if, if you feel like it's appropriate to bring any kind of representatives from the faculty or staff, um, to, to be part of the discussion, I'd be happy to hear from those people or hear your report on what you know from those people as part of the recommendation that you're making. And then in all of this discussion, I just don't know that we've ever said this on the record. I think it should be on the record, but I think this all really sucks. So that, that should be like officially somewhere on the record. Yes, please.
Make that multiple. Yeah. Wouldn't that be something? Don't tell me. Um, now, either that special meeting, in addition to that, or I know we've alerted obviously staff and parents that be expecting this. Is it worth putting out another notice, an email just to, if people aren't aware yet that there could be scheduling conflicts with babysitters that they might want to start thinking about in the future?
We have made that very clear in our correspondence to Travis that, you know, be prepared because it could change. You could get a, a phone call from me tonight, you know, that says we are, we are transitioning to virtual instruction because of this. So have a backup plan for childcare. And I know that's easy for me to say sitting here be, and it's very difficult for parents and I get that. And I want to be very respectful to our parents because it is really difficult at home right now to, um, you know, have your kids home and trying to work and provide virtual instruction, um, and support our teachers with kids at home. And it's hard because we have a number of people in this community who are essential workers. And we have a number of people in this community who are healthcare workers and they, they have to report to work. So we're putting a real strain on those families and the burden onto those families where right now, we don't have the data to support us going to a virtual instruction.
And I don't know if this could be part of the, the decision we come to, but and, and Bill, I'll defer to you and the expert to give you, who consult with you on this. But if there could be, you know, if we say, here are the factors we're going to be looking at in terms of the community spread and all of these, and looking at these things, we'll make a decision by X date on whether to go virtual. But parents, faculty should be preparing, students should be preparing for this eventuality, which we find very probable because of the way things are trending. So I, I think maybe leaving us a, a way to say, we could be going back to virtual instruction. I don't know if that's the best, but maybe that's something you could keep, keep on your, keep on your plate on here as an idea.
Sure.
And, and, um, I don't think we'll know obviously if, um, how many people are planning to travel over the break, but I'm sure every elementary, uh, teacher knows all the plans that the kids have. So we might have an idea from the faculty. I think their perspective on this might be pretty clear that they know, you know, 95% of our kids are saying that they're going to grandma's house in, in Pennsylvania. Then they, they all will, uh, report it back to, to, to the teachers. So.
Well, thank you guys.
So do we want to choose a special meeting for next week? I mean, it's always worked better when we're all here and can pull out our schedules and decide when to do it if we're going to do it.
But we're not all here.
That's true.
Okay. But four or five of us are here. So can we pick maybe two or three times that would be?
You guys have your calendars on your phone. Mine's downstairs.
I'm, I'm good anytime, but Wednesday night, but I could even make that work if needed.
So Debbie, do you want to send us a doodle poll? How's that?
I can do that.
Okay. So let's do a doodle poll for a special meeting, just to discuss. I, I think, I think what I need is to real, to really help take all of those considerations, like, you know, the medical considerations are like in the pit of my gut. Um, but what, what I need help thinking through and seeing is all of those other pieces and what it means if we do, and what if it, what it means if we don't. Um, and then the other thing is just to help all of us have in our minds when we don't have a choice and we have to go fully remote for some reason. All of the, we, we then all have all of those pieces in our heads and we know like what, and I think, Bill, you probably, you and your group already have a lot of that in your heads, but it would help me to have that conversation in that context just so that we kind of have the list of, these are our considerations and these are the things we need to be thinking about. And so if and when we have to make that decision or if and when we're forced into that decision, these are the pieces. Does that make sense?
And the implications of going fully remote.
Yeah.
Thank you. That would, it would help me to have a, a time specifically devoted to that. So. Okay. Do we still have an agenda? Hang on. Um, I have so many. Uh, okay. So Bill, is there anything else in your update that was?
No, that was it.
Update. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank, thank you. So you thanked everybody else. We thanked everybody else. So I'm going to thank you again for all of this, um, because I'm fairly certain you're not sleeping. So.
Not much.
Well, thank you. Um, steering committee updates. Elementary?
Uh, we're meeting next week, um, the 17th.
Okay. Secondary?
Uh, we met and we, uh, continued to work on our, uh, survey that we're going to send out to alumni. Kind of getting engaged of where alumni are. We, we've kind of refined that and we're going to be consulting, continue to consult some experts at Colgate on surveys to, to try and make sure we're getting the best possible return and the best possible data we can from that survey. We also had a chance to look over the data from a survey, which we had some good responses from about, um, to uh, parents about virtual instruction and, and how we can help people and how we can get kind of peer-to-peer help on virtual instruction. It was good to look at that data and, and get a sense of that. Um, and then our students on the, on the steering committee, um, have some great ideas about how they could help their fellow students working through the NJHS and NHS to, to, um, to facilitate tutoring of younger students, uh, even some mentorship type of thing. So I think they're going to be working on some stuff. Um, maybe Mark knows more things that have happened in the meantime on that regard, but it was great to hear those students take the lead and, and kind of coming up with some ideas that they had for how they could help their fellow students. So it was really nice to see.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I know they've met with, um, Ms. White, National Honor Society, uh, National Junior Honor Society Advisor. And so they've got the ball rolling on, um, how to try to organize something like that. Um, it is difficult in a virtual environment and having kids on computers and stuff. So there's some logistics they have to work out, but we're gonna, we're gonna have conversations and see what we can do.
Great. Thanks. Uh, PTO update. Jen, I think you were tagged at reading that update.
Yes, I do have an email from, uh, Sheila Catania, the PTO president. Um, she said, last month, we were able to provide all teachers and staff with a delicious lunch the Friday before Thanksgiving break. A big thank you to the landmark for preparing all the food and delivering. Also, we had a very successful winter gear and clothing drive, collecting five giant totes. The PTO washed and sanitized everything and returned them to the school. We also had our scholastic book fair and all proceeds will be going to fill classroom libraries. Looking ahead, we are looking into literacy programs across all grades for the long winter months. We will also launch a fundraiser called Mabel's Labels. Information will be coming soon and happy holidays from the PTO.
Great. Thank you for reading that. Um, next is the Hamilton Emerald Foundation. Um, the note here says, Hamilton Emerald Foundation is working on their drive to raise funds. They also just added a new member to their committee that will start joining their meetings in January. I think Michelle is the liaison. Does anybody know who the new member of the Hamilton Emerald Foundation is? No, replacing Sally, right? Um, knowledge sharing? Does anybody have anything they wish to share?
I have a couple of things. Um, Bill, thank you so much for letting us know about, uh, the law webinar. Uh, looking forward to a COVID-19 school environment or post-COVID-19 school environment. Um, I felt it was really informative. Um, and I do have a couple of questions that just came out of that. Um, the first one is, do we have, I know like they came up, they discussed the dress code and the, like with the camera on, weapons in the background, people showing things. So I'm, and it said, you know, instead of each teacher setting expectations, we really should have an expectations as a school. And I was just wondering if that was something, um, that we had thought about. Um, they brought up some really good points that I think a lot of people wouldn't really think about.
So yes, I, I know Mark has, has made those expectations very clear. So yes, I, I know Mark has, has made those expectations very clear, um, to the secondary students and reminds them quite often in the Daily Bulletin, uh, about the expectations of being on and being appropriately dressed and talking about the backgrounds. And so, yes, we have made those abundantly clear.
Okay, is that the same for elementary as well?
I think, um, it has happened more, um, between the teachers and the students on an individual basis.
Is that an opportunity to revise the code of conduct books? For the future?
Well, we can. Hopefully we'll be back, uh, in person in the near future. That would be the goal. But, uh, um, you know, I think just making our expectations explicitly clear to students and i- if there is a situation where it becomes habitual behavior, it's addressed and, um, addressed appropriately.
Well, I think even with the weapons, like they brought up a really good point that it was hunting season. And I know, um, in one of the bowsees classes, um, somebody had actually signed in while they were hunting and a bow was showing. Um, so, and then a bunch of the kids had started having that conversation. So I just, I think across all platforms, it would be really interesting to address some of that as well.
Yeah. And, and I can tell you that particular incident was, was, um, handled immediately by Mr. Heket.
Um, and then Bill, this is probably another question for you. I'm just wondering, um, what the HCF consent rate is for testing for teachers and students. Do we have a high consent rate? A lot of people that completed those surveys?
We do. We, we have enough consent to, to conduct our 20%, our 30%. Um, I don't have the exact numbers and, um, I can share those with the board, um, a- at another time. But yes, our, our.
You keep muting yourself.
What, did, what'd you hear?
Our numbers are good.
Yeah. We have enough consent to, to meet the requirements of the, the cluster testing.
Okay, great. And then, um, the only other big thing that I got is, um, they had made the comment about apps and how so many teachers are finding all these new apps. So I was just wondering again, if we had a policy in place for any apps that people want to try out to filter through Chris before just trying them.
We do. All of our, all of our app usage, app purchase has to go through Chris a- as our data privacy officer to make sure everything is 2D compliant.
Okay. And that goes for free apps and paid apps?
Everything. Anything that we use as a district has to go through Chris to make sure it's 2D compliant.
Great. Thank you. And again, thank you for inviting us to that because it was, it was really informative. It was interesting.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Great. Anybody else?
Ellen, you've shared a lot of knowledge about your medical field here. Do you want to fill out our little form with all the information and takeaways?
The form's not big enough.
You can fit in a couple extra bullet points?
Shoot me, uh, shoot me an email of the list of things you want in our, and I'll, on all, I'll do my best to, to bullet it and, uh, go from there. Vaccine will be.
Anything as far as now.
Vaccine will be the next upcoming discussion, but it's going to be a little while. I don't, today was the day. I haven't heard. Did the FDA approve it?
In our, in our Department of Health called this morning with Eric, um, he was waiting on FDA approval.
Today was the day. Today was the day they were reviewing. I have not heard, but then I haven't been in a situation where I would have heard. So.
Um, yeah, apparently there's 170,000 doses that have been committed to New York. Um, 6,400 doses regionally that will go to healthcare providers and nursing homes initially.
Now, Ellen, can you answer that? The doses is like, kind of like a misnomer, right? It's half of that?
I was just going to say, so 6,400 doses is 3,200 people. Because it would be smart to keep the second dose because we ran into that with another vaccine years ago where everybody got their first dose. And then when it was time for their second dose, we didn't have it. Um, and so I'm hopeful that people will, um, choose to, all right, here's a New York Times article from 57 minutes ago that says FDA panel gives green light to Pfizer's COVID vaccine. So those will actually start shipping tomorrow. Um, so, um, so yeah, I hadn't actually heard the number that there would be 6,400 doses locally. Um, so those will go to hospitals, ERs, um, ICUs, um, and those places first. Hopefully by end of January, the rest of the medical personnel have it and maybe by February educators will have it. I don't know. I mean, educators are, I think tier two below medical personnel. I think it's medical personnel, long-term care facilities, and I think educators are the tier just below that. So they're, they're relatively at the top of the list. It's just a matter of when we have enough to get, get it out to people. Another unknown. Another moving part. So, anyhow. All right. That is the end of our agenda with the exception of number eight, which is participation from the public. So Chris, do you have any magic wishes for us? Yep. So we'll officially open that window and give people a chance to enter any comments or questions.
So if you'd like to participate, please put your comment in the, uh, live chat box.
How many viewers do we have, Chris?
Currently 10, but we were up to, I think, 17 at the peak.
Wow. That's exciting.
Can you get us the data on what, what, what dropped them?
At the time of the meeting.
Was it only said that Matt, we, we reminded people that Matt hadn't given his report yet?
Yeah, I'll find out exactly when they bail out.
No, it was when I was going to stay here and watch their kids.
Exactly.
They logged off to go cancel all their existing childcare arrangements.
No new comments.
Do we need to publicly state that that was not a serious recommendation? For the record. Okay. Anyway, moving forward. All right. So I believe we are at the point where, um, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of particular individuals and the upcoming negotiations of both unions.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, just to, to, in Michelle's words, we're not expecting to vote on anything during executive session, correct? We do not need to come back to vote?
That is correct.
Okay. So we are not expecting to come back to vote on anything.
Okay, I'm going to end the stream now.
Okay.
Thanks. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.